The September 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we provide an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city business. These opportunities are held before each council meeting. Our council meetings are typically the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the period of time when we hold open podium is from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers here. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the issue you plan to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers have finished, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions on it, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We have some proclamations and presentations, and the first item is a donation from Elaine Sampson. I'm assuming Mr. Lotthammer.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, as you know, Mrs. Sampson and the Sampson family have been very generous to us over the years at the Arts Center, both in donating the facility and also giving contributions on a very regular basis that go towards supporting the programs and the facility. This $5,000 is for glass fusing equipment that will help us with in expanding our glass fusing program at the Arts Center, so we really thank her for her assistance going forward too.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $5,000 from Elaine Sampson for the purchase of glass fusing equipment for the Eden Prairie Arts Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Another donation for Eden Prairie Players.
Yes, Warren Sampson, who's a part of the Eden Prairie Players and also has been very generous to our city over the years, is donating $1,250, and it's actually for us to be able to purchase the services of an illustrator and to give a really unique feel to the promotional pieces that we do for the winter theater, especially in some of the other theater programs throughout the year. So, we'll be able to engage somebody with pretty talented art and illustration skills to help really bring that play to life and give a good representation of what it's going to be like, so we appreciate his donation.
Any relation to Elaine Sampson?
That is her son, yes.
Oh, it is, okay, all right. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,250 from Warren Sampson to commission a graphic artist to create illustrations for the Eden Prairie Players 2015 season brochure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. A donation from Kit and Ty Thayer.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a scenario where they approached us at the community center and talked to Wendy Sevenick, our community center manager, and relayed to her how important they think the community center has been for them and what a place it has within the community, and they wanted to contribute towards the community center. And after more conversation, telling them some of the things that we do, selection of working with some of the kids and people with special needs and some of the equipment that makes it even more accessible for them to be a part in some of the community center programs that occur, so they donated $1,000 to go towards that type of equipment.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,000 from Kit and Ty Thayer for the purchase of equipment to support programming opportunities for individuals with special needs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Another donation for the Eden Prairie Players.
This anonymous donation for $5,000 is for microphones and sound systems for the Eden Prairie Players. They'll be primarily used in multiple locations, whether it's at the barn or other areas at Staring Lake, but it'll be very helpful to be able to project the sound and also to give some more capabilities for wireless microphones to some of the casting characters to not stress their voices and be more heard, especially when you're out at Staring Lake and it might be a windier day. It'll just really up the quality of the participants.
Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $5,000 from an anonymous donor for the purchase of wireless microphones.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. These are just four of the numerous donations that we get from community members every year. The community members are very generous, giving back to the city and making things available for all of our citizens, and I just wanted to give a little plug as long as two of these donations were to the Eden Prairie Players. Last weekend, the Eden Prairie Players, who are supported by our Park and Rec Department, opened their series of one-act plays, and my husband and I went to see it on Friday night. It was sold out, and it was amazingly good. They have done such a fabulous job. They solicit scripts from all over the country. They get scripts from every state in the United States and some foreign countries. They read the scripts. They whittle it down to about seven plays that they do every year. This year, there are five comedies and two dramas, and the quality of the performances and the quality of the scripts is just unbelievable. And they perform at the Riley Lake Barn, so we were glad that we had little blankets with us because it was a little cool on Friday night, but I highly recommend people to attend. Mr. Sampson, who made a donation tonight, directs one of the plays. There are a lot of people from Eden Prairie that are in the shows, and there's even a high school sophomore from Eden Prairie who is directing one of the shows in her debut as a director. So, it's a great evening event. This weekend is the closing weekend, but they will be performing Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night and Sunday at 2:00. The evening performances are at 7:30, and you can go online for tickets. They're $2 cheaper, they're $13 if you get them online, and I would recommend it because there aren't a whole lot of seats in the barn there. Otherwise, the tickets are $15. Thursday night, and this might be especially appealing to the high school students in the crowd, is Pay What You Can Night, so keep that in mind if you're looking for something fun to do with your friends. You can find more information on edenprairieplayers.com. It's a really well-kept secret in Eden Prairie, but one of the really gems that our city has is Eden Prairie Players. So, is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to add or poll?
Mayor, I do have one thing to add, one thing to poll. So, if you looked at the consent agenda, maybe we could just remove item F. We need to remove that again, that grant application professional services agreement, and replace it with the resolution in front of you, and that is a city resolution of support for a business in our city Dry Stream Corporation in applying to the State of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development Job Creation Fund for some dollars to expand their current facility and to add approximately 30 new jobs in Eden Prairie. So, you may know that we have some history with supporting these applications with other companies in our city that have expanded and that have grown, so we'd ask that you add that tonight as the new item F and remove the current item F when we get to consent.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the council workshop minutes for Tuesday, August 19?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same evening?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion approved. Consent calendars, or motion for approval of items A through J?
Move approval of items A through J on the consent calendar, pulling the old F that was printed and adding a new F with the Dry Stream Project.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Anything to pull for a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to our first public hearing, which is for Lyons Tap Restaurant. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is actually a project that you've seen before because it came to you the end of last year, and I'll explain why it's back before you again in a little bit, but this is a request from Lyons Tap Restaurant to amend the comprehensive municipal plan change from rural residential to neighborhood commercial on .94 acres, amending the sewer plan to extend municipal services to serve an existing business located outside of the MUSA boundary, and to rescind resolutions 2013-97, 2013-98. Those are the resolutions from last year related to the same project. So, as a bit of background, you did approve a comprehensive guide plan change from rural residential to neighborhood commercial and a comp plan amendment at the end of last year to extend the MUSA boundary to include the entire 11.5 acres owned by the Notermans and is related to their Lyons Tap property. That approval was contingent upon Met Council approval, and when the application did go to Met Council, there were concerns raised with the MUSA line, and another alternative that came back, that the applicant rescinded their project and came forward with another one, was the specific recommendation then to amend the sewer plan and just provide for the sewer extension to serve that Lyons Tap site rather than extending the MUSA boundary to include the entire property. So, as a result of that, the proponent withdrew their previous request, submitted a new request. The planning commission took action and voted 5-0 recommending approval of the project at their August 25 council meeting, and then before the public hearing, just to reiterate, there are two requests tonight for you to act on, to re-guide that just under an acre of land from rural residential to neighborhood commercial, and then to amend the comprehensive sewer plan to extend sewer to the Lyons Tap site. With that, I see the project proponent is having a hard time finding a seat, but they're here, and staff or the proponent are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Did you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Okay.[743.32][743.32](laughing) You're just here for questions, okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this MUSA line extension? And for all you students, a MUSA line is an artificial line drawn by the Metropolitan Council that says, "We will provide sewer and other utilities within this area," so it kind of prevents urban sprawl because if you go outside the MUSA line, you don't get Metropolitan Council-provided services, so... Okay.
Well, seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for guide plan change from rural residential to neighborhood commercial on 0.94 acres and amending the sewer plan to extend municipal services to serve an existing business located outside of the MUSA boundary, and adopt the resolution rescinding resolution numbers 2013-97, approving guide plan amendment and MUSA expansion, and resolution number 2013-98, approving PUD concept plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
It's not totally on this, because I totally approve of this, but since the city goes beyond the MUSA line, and so does Chaney, and, you know, points beyond that, have we done anything to try to get the MUSA line actually moved to cover the rest of our city? Because, in fact, it's not doing anything for urban sprawl because it's all urban.
Councilmember Nelson, a quick answer would be, you know, it's our understanding that a good portion of the line in the city is kind of up to that bluff area, so a lot of the area that is still Eden Prairie but outside the MUSA line is not developable for the most part, but Ms. Jeremiah might have an answer as it relates to our discussions with Met Council or what we might be considering with our comp plan update that's coming soon.
Your Honor, Councilmember, the response that city manager Getcho gave was accurate in that most of the area we see as being either undevelopable or developable at very low densities because of bluffs and other natural features, and in some cases even historic features that are worthy of protection. So, there's very little additional expansion of the MUSA line that is expected in Eden Prairie. This is a situation where we have an existing business and it makes sense to serve them, and regardless of the guiding and zoning, the bluff ordinance that protects the steep slopes is still in effect with any underlying zoning, so that protection will still be afforded. So, we do look at it an individual basis, but there isn't a lot of extension that is expected.
Thank you. Did we have a motion?
Bradley.
Yeah, okay. Did we have a second also?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next public hearing is for Margaret A. Cargill Philanthropies for Construction. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a request from Margaret A. Cargill Philanthropies for a planned unit development concept review on just over five acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers, zoning district amendment within the office district, a site plan review, and a preliminary plat for that five acres located at 6889 Roland Road. This project is coming forward as an expansion of the office building, actually proposed expansion of approximately 65,000 square feet, quite a large expansion to a existing structure that's 27,000 square feet, and a big part of the project is related to the seeking of lead platinum certification, so there are many, many different sustainable and green elements with this project that are coming forward with a green roof, solar lighting, landscaping, geothermal irrigation, just a lot of pieces of the green aspect with this expansion. There are waivers that are being requested with this PUD related to the building height in the parking. You'll hear that the building height waiver is related to the need to construct an elevator to allow access to a penthouse and a green roof, and then also a waiver related to parking because of the unique configuration and style of the building as well. And so, staff recommends approval of those waivers based on the unique circumstances of the property, based on the green, sustainable practices. The planning commission voted 5-0 to approve recommendation of this project at their August 25 meeting, and I believe representatives of Margaret A. Cargill are here to provide a brief presentation and an overview of their project for you, and then following that overview, city staff and the Margaret A. Cargill are here to answer any questions that you or the public may have during the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you for allowing us to present tonight. I'd like to give you just a bit of background. I'm the Margaret A. Cargill Philanthropies. I'm Sean Kinery, the manager of office and facilities for the Margaret A. Cargill Philanthropies, which includes three grant-making entities founded by the late Margaret A. Cargill. We are the largest philanthropy in Minnesota and one of the five largest in the nation. Our mission is to provide meaningful assistance and support to society, the arts, and the environment. We take our commitment to the environment very seriously in how we work, how we manage our resources in our facilities, and in our grant-making. And toward that commitment, much of our building expansion planning has focused on protecting the adjacent watershed and maximizing sustainable use of resources such as water and energy. The remodel of our current facility allowed our organization to restore the native prairie landscape and receive lead gold status, the highest achievement for an existing building. The goal for our building expansion is lead platinum. Margaret grew up here in the Twin Cities area, so we have a natural affinity for this location and are committed to remaining in Eden Prairie and at our present location. The city of Eden Prairie and Nine Mile Creek Watershed District have been excellent partners, and our strong working relationship was a major factor in our decision to remain in our current location. During our initial remodel, both were extremely helpful, making sure we understood how to navigate state and local building codes, and as we began expansion planning, our experience with both has continued to be excellent. That has reinforced our commitment to remain in Eden Prairie. I'm joined this evening by Betsy Voss and Jeff Walls with Gensler, our design partner, Chris Nelson with KFI Engineers, and Patrick Keenan with VAA.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening. I will be driving the presentation from here, I hope. There we go. So, we wanted to do a brief overview of the design projects. You have an understanding of the design quality and the existing conditions that the MAC philanthropy currently occupy. So, in front of you right now is really our design approach. We developed this design philosophy with the MAC philanthropies, really to connect both the design of the project and the commitment to staying in Eden Prairie back to their mission. So, one of the key drivers was to create a singular building. You'll see as we go through the design, the current building is a really high-quality building. The expansion's planning to match that, so really it fits into the neighborhood and the context of Eden Prairie and the community around Roland and Shady Oak. The next key point is quality and integrity. As Sean spoke so eloquently, the MAC is committed to staying in Eden Prairie, and they would like a building that's built for the long term and that is really committed to quality, not just in the built environment but through the landscape, the site, and to create a place that the community is proud of. The third point, as Sean began to talk about, which is the environmental stewardship. The MAC philanthropies did in 2010 a renovation of the current building. It did achieve lead gold. We're pushing this project to achieve lead platinum plus, so beyond platinum, so we'll talk through some of the sustainable strategies that are going to hopefully allow us to achieve that with this design project, and to create environmental stewardship. So, the larger site now affords the MAC the opportunity to reinvest in the landscape with native plants, diversity of native species, to restore the wetland buffer, and to really create a beautiful, sustainable landscape, which could be, I think, a showpiece in Eden Prairie, to create a place that's welcoming, again, that connects both the MAC philanthropy to the community and a world-class experience, as Sean said. They're a world-class organization, and the building should reflect that. In front of you is the site plan. So, you can see my mouse here. The current building, which the MAC has been occupying since 2010, is really in this location here, which is about 26,000 square feet. The addition is to create sort of a middle bar here and then a southern bar here. The site itself, this is Shady Oak Road, this is Roland Road, and then this is Old Shady Oak. So, the site plan really begins to embrace the wetland, which is the key design opportunity, so to create a lot of outdoor amenity spaces for the MAC to embrace the wetland, which they are excited about, and really began that restoration in the original design project in 2010. This is a view. This is a rendering of what the approach to the new building construction would look like once it's completed off of Roland Road. So, as was described, we are asking for and have been approved for by the planning commission two waivers. One is a parking waiver, so the parking approach to the project would be that all the MAC philanthropy staff park underneath in a single-floor below-grade parking structure that actually connects to a current, existing below-grade parking structure, and then guests and visitors park on a surface lot, so that really allows for them to serve more guests and visitors than they have now, but create a separation between visitors and MAC staff. As you look at this first rendering, you start to see the scale and the materials really start to talk to the existing architecture. So, you see limestone, heavy timber, copper, brick, and permeable pavers. The MAC philanthropies already has permeable pavers. They're managing all their stormwater. We are part of the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, so we have worked hard with their staff to create a really complex and very sustainable landscape that manages all stormwater on-site, so the permeable pavers and the native landscape help to do that. This is an aerial perspective, so this starts to look at a bird's-eye view of what that new building development would look like. Again, back here is the original building. In 2010, the MAC philanthropies did install a significant portion of photovoltaic panels on their roof. It's not seen by the public because the mansard roof covers that and screens it. Part of the goal to achieve platinum is to really go beyond what they've currently done and maximize the roof area with photovoltaic panels. That, along with other strategies, including intensive green roof, which again is an additional stormwater management strategy, and also an opportunity to create edible gardens up there as well as wildflower gardens that, again, will create another amenity and another opportunity to really test sustainable technology. We're also looking at a geothermal installation in the wetland, so we are working with the Nine Mile Creek on that. So, geothermal will really provide the MAC philanthropy as a high-performance energy system that will allow them to get to lead platinum. Food production, as well as sustainable landscapes, are really important as, again, they invest into the landscape to create something that's both beautiful, educational, and sustainable for the long term. You can see a couple other features. There's two significant skylights that provide daylighting, which is really important. All the light will be LED lighting inside, but the daylight will help offset those requirements. This is a view, again, more of an aerial perspective on the backside, so this starts to show you where the staff would enter the garage, and then a view to the back, so more sustainable landscape, moments for art, and then a view of the dining terrace, which is an important feature for the MAC philanthropies, to create an opportunity to engage in that outdoor landscape and to really provide a space for not only the staff but potentially opportunities for the community to come in and experience the landscape. There is a walking path, so the expanded site allows the MAC philanthropy to really start to activate and really compel their staff to get out and be more healthy, so part of their well-being program will include one-third of a mile walking path around the site, so again, to encourage people to get out and be part of that landscape. Another feature here is a community-supported agriculture, a CSA drop site. So, the MAC philanthropy leadership wanted to create a moment where the community could come in and really engage with the building. There are plans to be photovoltaic panels on that structure. That will be the only portion of the building where you'd actually see that there's photovoltaic production, so that's also a learning and educational opportunity, but again, a way to connect to both sustainable local agriculture and the community at the same time. This image starts to tell the story of the dining terrace, so again, opportunity to explore a native landscape, sustainable woods, permeable pavers, and again, another place to create an amenity where the MAC philanthropies and the community can come together. And then this is a close-up little plan of the rooftop garden. So, the penthouse, the other variants that we're asking for or have been approved by the planning commission, is to create an accessible access to the roof. Currently, the MAC philanthropies has a drop hatch with a ship's ladder, and that's how they service their photovoltaic and their mechanical unit. In this building, with the idea of all the photovoltaics and the notion of doing solar thermal, so there's an educational opportunity there, as well as this green roof, we need an accessible access to that roof, so that would require an elevator, it's overrun and then the stair. So, that is the reason why we're asking for that. Also, it's from a code perspective, an easier way to get up to the roof if there's ever an issue to do that. So, this area on the roof will house more food production, so more gardens, and then a wildflower garden. So, next, Chris is going to talk about the geothermal in the wetland.
Thanks, Betsy. This is just a planned view of the geothermal well field. It's located, you can see there's 144 bore holes, and that's what we're using to, the relative constant temperature of the earth to heat and cool the building through a heat pump refrigeration cycle. And again, this is one of our main sustainable opportunities to gain a lot of energy efficiency by using a geothermal system. The bore holes will be roughly 220 feet deep. This schematic is just depicting the vertical bore holes going down through the earth. It's a closed-loop system and very energy-efficient.
Another point we wanted to add is the sustainable impact of the photovoltaic and the reduction in energy is actually equivalent to offsetting 460 metric tons of carbon every year for the MAC, which equates to about 97 passenger vehicles annually, their carbon that they would produce. So, thinking about this really globally and how can the MAC philanthropies show leadership in really not only energy production but carbon reduction and innovative technologies that are appropriate for the northern Midwest.
So, that's roughly about 50% energy savings. So that's roughly about 50% energy savings versus an ashtray 90.1 baseline. So it's a very energy-efficient building. Carbon reduction and it served the very well.
Thank you.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Getchell or the proponent at this point? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Margaret A. Cargill expansion?
Seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for plan unit development concept review on 5.04 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for plan unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment within the office zoning district on 5.04 acres. Adopt the resolution for preliminary plat of 5.04 acres into one lot, and then direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and any commission recommendations and possible council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion?
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Also, you're to be commended to do the LEED Platinum. I'd really like to see that happening.
It's really exciting, so thank you. Thank you for being part of Eden Prairie.
We'd all like to see it when it's, once it's done.
I'm sure that's possible. I know it gets up, I'm sure that's possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. On payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Some of.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lucas.
Aye.
That brings us to reports. We have a report from the Park and Rec Director, Mr. Luthammer.
Your Honor, councilmembers, this item is to consider entering into a lease for basically continued operation of Camp Edenwood by True Friends. And you're used to hearing them referred to as Friendship Ventures, but they've recently had a name change and consolidation too with Camp Courage. And so they're a broader organization, but still what was to us Friendship Ventures, but now being known as True Friends. To take you back just a little bit, I know all of you are aware of the historical significance of Camp Edenwood dating back to being a partner with the Glen Lake Sanatorium and being a location where children with tuberculosis were sent to air out and become better, hopefully. And the camp has buildings on the National Historic Registry and was deeded over to the city of Eden Prairie back in 1983. One of our deed restrictions is, is that the camp would be used ongoing for children and people with disabilities. And so that certainly is within the mission of True Friends and what they provide and the services that they provide to both children and young adults as well. They, since 94, have been operating, or the chief operator of the camp, operating within those deed restrictions. The lease is up at the end of this year. So we've been working with their organization to craft a lease to move forward for the next 20 years with the ability of the city to extend it for 10 years at the city's discretion at that point. It is important to us, and it's also important to True Friends, and we've had several conversations about the importance of following and staying within the historic guidelines, as well as any of our city ordinances, obviously, as well. We did have the opportunity a couple months ago to meet at the site with the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission and staff from True Friends, where they heard about the mission of True Friends and also were able to view the site and ask any questions. So this has been before both of those bodies. So we do have tonight, Randy Bozer from True Friends is with us. Should you have any questions? Or also, I could answer your questions as well, if you have any.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have one. Within this lease, are they guaranteeing that they will continue to do these camps and programs for kids during that 20-year period of time? And that, you know, 10 years from now, they won't suddenly decide that, you know, they're out of that business? What happens? You know, I'm assuming, especially since it's linked with Camp Courage, that it's going to be continuing. But is there some kind of a guarantee that they will within, or else the lease ends?
Yeah, that is our assumption as well, is that they will. However, within the lease, if they were not to continue to satisfy that mission, that is a stipulation within the lease to have a valid lease going forward. So if, for whatever reason, 10 years from now hypothetically that were to happen, the lease would not be in effect, and we would likely be entertaining some offers or options from other partners that might provide those types of services.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Case.
Mr. Luthammer, I just have a kind of a generic question. I just want to qualify it that I think True Friends has done a great job of partnering with us, and I think they're doing really wonderful work. My only question, since they rent for a dollar a year, is there competition of other groups that would meet all these conditions of offering a camp for children with disabilities that would want to step up and take advantage of that dollar a year lease?
I think the answer to that certainly has to be yes. However, when you look at what the operating expenses of that facility is, and I guess if we look at it as, what if we as a city had to sort of fully care for it as a facility? It would be quite expensive for us to be in that business. If you think of other organizations, maybe like a Wilderness Inquiry or somebody like that, possibly. But I'm not sure that they would be able to come to the table with much money, if any.
So nobody's knocking on our doors, is my point.
No, no.
And so we should be really, and we are thrilled, that True Friends wants to be in this space. And I'm thrilled about that. I just wanted to know if there was any competition out there interested as well.
Yeah, we believe this is a good match, and we also believe that if you tour the site, and I'm sure they would be happy if anybody would like to, the way they're making use of the camp and in the best way that they can with really tight dollars, making improvements when possible and, you know, being able to serve people in a really good way. So Mr. Bozer is approaching the podium, and so I think he'd like to add some commentary to that.
Thank you, Jay. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to some of the questions you're asking. We, we at True Friends, obviously, are very committed to our mission, and that is serving children and adults with disabilities. And that, we plan to do that for a very long time. We are also making a long-term commitment to the facility. Camp Edenwood is really, we have five camps around the state. And Camp Edenwood is the one that's within the metro area, so that's very popular for a lot of our programs, our weekend rest program and day camp programs. And so we are actually, have plans to enhance that facility and actually add to the value of that facility, both for you and for us as we move forward in the terms of this lease. And so our plans are not to just continue to use it, but also to continue to enhance and expand that facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We do need a motion.
I would move to authorize lease agreement with True Friends for the use of Camp Edenwood. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at our last council meeting, we requested the city attorney to do some research on the rulemaking authority of the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District. Mr. Getchell, do you want to?
Mayor, that is correct. Two weeks ago at the meeting, Councilmember Case brought up to the whole council this issue, asking us to look into it. So we do, it's kind of a two-part piece to this as well. The city attorney has done quite a bit of research into the authority for rulemaking, and so that's something that he will cover. And also, we thought it would be important just to bring everybody up to speed on the status of the rules in general from a practical standpoint, and where the city stands on comments and progress and where our position is. So we'd like to have the city attorney go through that entire issue, and then our Public Works Director, Mr. Ellis, will walk us through our status with the rules.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have been provided with a copy of our legal memorandum on this. Let me go through and highlight the major conclusions and answer the questions that the council posed at the last meeting. First question was really, why are their watershed districts established? And the law sets that out, that they're established to control and alleviate flood damage, to provide sanitation and public health, regulate the use of streams, ditches, and watercourses. And because these type of features cross all sorts of political boundaries, a new boundary was created for the watershed district. The members of the watershed district are appointed by the county in which they are. In this case, this watershed district's in two counties. There are five members, five managers, four appointed by Hennepin County and one appointed by Carver County. And each manager who's appointed, they're called managers, serves an initial three-year term. So that's the answer of why we have watershed districts, what's their purpose. They actually have wide, a very wide mission set out in the statutes that goes further than the topics that we've been concerned with and talking about. Their powers include providing electricity. If they wanted to provide dam upstream and generate electricity, they have that power. But that's beyond, a little bit beyond the scope tonight. The, the purpose of the memorandum was to clarify the issue regarding, do they have the authority to adopt rules? And do those rules trump the city ordinances that speak to the very same issues? And so on the first page of my memo, we state the issue, do they have authority to promulgate rules? And then I give you the answer before the discussion. So the answer is on the first page, and it says, "A watershed district located wholly within the metropolitan area," and that's this watershed district, "may directly regulate the use and development of land in the watershed only if..." And then there are three situations in which they may do that. "If the city does not have a properly approved and adopted local water management plan or has not adopted an implementation program." We have that. We're under statutory requirements to update that from time to time, and when they change their plan, we need to update our plan, but we have that. The second situation in which they may directly regulate the use and development of land is when there's an individual application, you know, such as the application we saw from the MAC tonight, an application to a local government for a permit to use the land that requires either an amendment or a variance from the adopted local water management plan. So if somebody needs a waiver, an amendment from an element in our ordinances that govern setbacks from streams and buffers for wetlands, that's where their rules would take precedence, if somebody wanted a variance from our rules. So the legislature has set that up in that, okay, you either live with the city's regulations. If you want a variance, then you need to be governed by the watershed district. Legislature has made no judgment as to whether the watershed district's rules, because this is a statewide legislation, would be more stringent or less stringent. It just passes the authority. So that's on a case-by-case situation. And third, they get to directly regulate the use and development of land in a watershed only if the local government, i.e. the city, has authorized the watershed district to require permits for the use and development of land. And we haven't done it. So absent, you know, an actual application coming in that would require a variance or an amendment to our zoning controls, our rules govern. So that's, I mean, that synthesizes the six or seven pages of the memo. Late today, just before I was leaving the office, I received a memorandum from the attorneys for the watershed district. I'd had a conversation with the attorney last week. He asked, he understood that I'd be preparing a memorandum, and he asked for the courtesy if I would provide it to him, and I said certainly. So as soon as I knew that what I had was worthy enough to go in the packet and was actually in the packet, I sent it to him. And they took a look at it, and they responded, and they have a three-page memorandum, deals with two points. First, the rulemaking issue. And second, I raised in my memorandum that the council has an issue regarding whether the promulgation of rules was a minor amendment under the Bowser rules. And it's a minor issue in the whole memo, but it was something that I felt was necessary to point out. So they addressed those two issues. So I'd asked the council, just set aside the minor amendment discussion. That's really not what we're concerned about here today. They disagree with me on that, and that's fine that they disagree. I disagree with them, but let's just set that aside. It's, for purposes of this discussion, it's not important. What's important is that they say in their memorandum, I'm pleased to report, they say in a quote, "In summary, we find that the city attorney and district council are in essential agreement on the district's authority to adopt rules as currently proposed." So...
Is that true?
Well, I've read this several times since I got it at 3:15, and they have this memorandum that you have, where I've just set out the instances in which the district rules would trump the city rules. And they're saying that we are in agreement. And that was frankly the gist of the conversation I had with their attorney last week. Now, if you read the earlier memorandum from their attorney, as well as this memorandum, they always end with, "We are able to work all these issues out with the cities that we deal with." And I believe that they do try very hard to work out these issues because they recognize what I have on the first page, that these are the circumstances in which their rules govern. And so I believe in good faith, they do try to work very hard with the cities to work out those issues. They're not able to work them out. In this instance, I believe, it's my opinion, that our rules prevail, that they're not allowed to, they're allowed to adopt rules, but they're not allowed to enforce them so long as we have an approved water plan and we have not authorized them to issue permits.
So to cut to the chase, if I may. If they were to go ahead in October or November, whenever, and pass their rules, fine, right? And they, we could be respectful and honoring of their intent and whatever. But the people of Eden Prairie would not, and including probably the watershed district, if each city met these three conditions, but let's just talk Eden Prairie for a moment. The people of Eden Prairie would not be legally bound to adhere to the rules of the watershed district, unless they were concerned about one of the Eden Prairie rules, that they would then appeal to the watershed district. But otherwise, the three conditions are not being met, and therefore, go make rules, but they're not binding. Am I hearing that correct?
Essentially, yes. I wouldn't say go make rules and they're not binding. I would say that they have a statutory duty to enact rules, and I respect that, and they should do that. But, and our staff has been working hard with them to see that the rules are consistent with our rules so that there aren't those instances where property owners need to be concerned about, your rules are this.
Right.
And their rules are something different. And then, of course, you go to the next watershed district in the city of Eden Prairie, and their, you know... So we're working hard to coordinate all that. But in the final analysis, yes, I agree with what you said.
Fine, I mean, I absolutely, truly have great respect for watershed districts to really help with water quality, to help when there are issues of water flowing from one municipality into another municipality and govern that process. I mean, they absolutely have a role to play, and I respect their... have a role to play. And, and I respect their rulemaking really throughout the years, as long as it's been in agreement and consistent with what the cities also have agreed with. I, I have some concern, and I wish, I wish that the personalities involved in the watershed district would see that it would be in everyone's best interest if they get everyone to the table. And they get, you know, they get the lake associations, working with them and engaged. And, because they need them. They really need each other. And that's the part of this that's frustrating to me, is we have some of our residents that are seemingly, perceptually, according to them, not being engaged in this process. And, and so I, I'm hearing that if we believe that the watershed district is not capable of enforcing their rules, that might be a great leverage or incentive to bring them to the table, to have us play a facilitation role, to help, again, with the rulemaking that we, that we agree is good, and pull in the various parties and, and have this be successful. So I, I find this positive this evening. I don't know what the rest of you are thinking, but...
Councilmember Nelson, you were next.
Yes, I just, one thing that seems to have come up over and over is, you know, city staff has been working with us. So clearly, but there's also been an idea that because city staff has worked with them, we have given up our rights to have our rules. And that's not the case, from what I understand from you.
You are correct. That is not the case. I've had a number of discussions with the city manager and the director of public works about the comments that we have put in to, on their rules, and have always wanted to make sure that whatever we say, we aren't abdicating any right we have to have rules. And I think in the last conversation we had, perhaps yesterday, we, we discussed that. That no, we are continuing to work with them. There have been some movement and, and some issues that have been resolved. And there are still plenty of issues to be resolved. But that should not be, that should not be interpreted as this third point, that we've authorized them to require permits. None of our letters have authorized them to require permits. That would take an action of the council to authorize them to issue permits, and we have not had that.
Nor does the fact that the staff has continued to work with them, which the staff should, because the city's very interested in the health of our lakes and our creeks and our wetlands. That goes without saying.
That's right.
And, you know, may in fact have rules that are even more stringent in some cases. But yeah, I've gotten the feeling from talking from people on a variety of sides of the issues, that they feel that since their staff has worked with them, that means we have given up rights. And, you know, I do want it to be clear that we want to work with them, but we haven't given up rights.
That is correct.
Councilmember Aho.
I was just going to say, kind of add on to this. I think that it's really important that we do work with the watershed district in concert with them as a city. But also, I think, you know, really, we have such a great resource in our, in our residents that live on the lakes. I mean, they're closest to that water body, and they know what's going on with that body of water. And, and they can have sometimes the greatest effect on that, on that body of water, in, in their practices and things they do and things they don't do. And so I think it's really behooves the watershed district to really engage our residents and really work with our associations and really to form a partnership, one that's mutually beneficial and not adversarial. And, and kind of the, the thing that bothers me is it seems like we've had, we've had this headbutting adversarial relationship going on. And I think that is really a bad thing. I think we really need to get the watershed people focused on working together with the city and with the residents and, and vice versa. And so I'd really like to see those relationships mended and really be more mutually beneficial. And, and when it comes to enforcement, I mean, it's up to the city to enforce this. And so we're going to enforce our own, our own, you know, rules. And so let's, let's all work together and try to accomplish good things.
I think this whole process is really interesting, because it's one of the few things that we deal with as a council, where there seem to be two authorities that kind of govern the same thing. So that leads me to my question, which is probably actually a question for Mr. Ellis. And that is, are there currently any city water management plan rules or regulations that are more stringent than what is being proposed by Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek or by Nine Mile?
There are a number of rules, so it would be hard for me to know if there are any of them that are more stringent. But I would say as a general rule, what we're seeing in the proposed Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed districts, they appear to be equal to or more stringent than what we see in the Nine Mile Creek watershed district rules, and certainly more than what you would see in the lower Minnesota watershed district rules. Most of our rules that we have as a municipality are geared towards subdivision of property. What's a little bit new and has triggered a lot of discussion with the Riley Purgatory rules is how properties that are making enhancement to their parcels, whether it's an addition, re-landscaping their backyard. I think that's the part that might be a little bit new to some residents of Eden Prairie. But as a general note on that question, I would say they're probably more stringent. And that would be the, the watershed district rules.
The only, the only reason that I ask that question is because I'm just thinking about how this whole process should theoretically work. And if, if we're functioning with a set of rules, and all the cities around us are functioning with a set of rules that seem inadequate to deal with the situation with the lakes, with flood control or with water quality issues, then a change needs to be made. And is it something that we have adequate staff that's thoroughly knowledgeable on those issues, that is going to promote those changes? Or is that a case where the watershed district really can come in and say, "In order to improve water quality of this lake, you need, we should be doing this and this and this," and work with the city to increase the stringency of our codes? I mean, how, how does that happen? Because if, if the lakes aren't great now, based on current management practices, any change to improve it is probably going to be a little onerous to somebody along the line. It's, it's going to have an impact.
Yeah. Well, you know, and to answer that question, I would say that we have a lake here in town that has recently shown water quality improvement. So it would be Red Rock Lake. And that was with or without the Riley Purgatory rules. So, you know, I, I wouldn't prescribe to the theory that you need to have stringent rules to improve water quality. I think it's really about the quality of the rules you put in place. And I think that's a lot of what we've heard from the public, is, you want to see more science behind the rules. How are these certain rules being implemented? How are they really going to show water quality improvements? I think as city staff has gone through this process, we've gone with the mindset that if the watershed district is going to implement rules and begin that regulatory process that they once had, we'd like to see it start with the Nine Mile Creek watershed district rules, because we're familiar with them. We know how they're interpreted. We know how they're applied. And it's something that we'd like to see consistency. So as we went through this process, we thought if those rules are going to be implemented, that would be something that we could support. As the process has gone through, we've seen that it's actually become more stringent than Nine Mile Creek watershed district. And that's what's caused us some concern. It's also opened up new definitions and how this would be applied. And it just creates concern about how, what, what would be the impact of this new rule that isn't seen in other watershed districts? High-risk erosion areas is one that you've probably heard about. That would be a new rule that's being proposed here. We have a lot of Eden Prairie that would be classified as high-risk erosion area. We don't know what that means. We don't know how this rule is going to impact dozens, hundreds of properties. So there's still a lot of questions. And that's why we've gone at this with a, a little bit of, let's start with what we know and build from there. And, and so it's, that's the philosophy that staff has taken going through this process.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Getcho, where we go from here, because it feels like there's a window of opportunity for the city to get involved in the process and, and maybe facilitate the conversations where we need it to go. Because it, I don't know that the watershed district's going to agree with Mr. Rosso's finding. But if, if they could get to the point where at least there's some skepticism on their part that here they're going to pass these rules, but they're not going to be able to enforce them, I would think they would want rules therefore that could be passed that would be enforceable. Then, I mean, I would think that we have an opportunity now to, to draw people to the table and maybe begin the process of facilitating what we want. I mean, everyone wants the cleaner water, cleaner lakes, cleaner streams. We want it done. There, there's a difference between just simply doing it and ramming it down people's throats that may or may not be as impactful or effective, versus really getting, and I agree with Brad completely, getting particularly late front owners to be in the game. Because I think they're very valuable in this whole process. But, and I agree, I believe deeply they want the same thing. There may be different interpretations on what clean water looks like, you know, because we've been through that with the weeds and all that. So I, I just feel like, Mr. Getcho, there's got to be a role for us to play here. And what's the next step?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think there are a couple pieces of, you know, what would be new information? So how everyone reacts to the new information of our city attorney's interpretation of the rulemaking authority and where we go from here. We, just as you said, Councilmember Case, would want to, to reconnect with the watershed district and, and talk about what those differences are. Secondly, the, the other process has been going on for close to a year, if not longer. And that would be our comments, which are in the, updated comments, again, which are in the packet, about the rules, which Mr. Ellis said, you know, in kind of a, a quick summary would be, you know, have the rules be similar to Nine Mile. But he can also elaborate on, on projects that the city would have or, or residents would have that we have concerns with. So there's, you know, that part as well. And then the third part, which it does get a little more difficult, it would be the different opinions people have on rules. I think there are some people that would say, "The Nine Mile rules sound great. There are rules that might be a little bit beyond the Nine Mile that are unique to Riley Purgatory that might be okay." Or, "No rules is okay." So I think we kind of have to play that out. But as you said, I think the, the city council and city staff have tried to stay connected continually with the lake associations, all the way to shallow lake management. You know, we've had several discussions with our residents about issues with shallow lake management, all the way to the rules. So we'll still do that. We'll continue that dialogue. And hopefully, we can come to a place where, what rules are, that are in place, everyone can agree to. So we'll work toward that.
Something's going to probably happen in terms, in terms of conversation in the next month and a half. Can you come back in a month, in six weeks, in two months, something, and just keep us updated and give us kind of regular feedback on what's happening? Is that acceptable?
Certainly, we could, we could have this on, on the next agenda. I think we'll have some information in the next two to three weeks, where we could come back definitely at the first or second meeting in October.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
You know, the one extra thing I would like to get more information in, maybe by the next meeting, is, you know, there are lake associations. But this also applies to people on creeks and people immediately next to watersheds, you know, swamps or, you know.
Wetlands.
Wetlands, sorry.
We have wetlands. We don't have swamps.
That's true. Wetlands. So how do we keep a resident who is, in the future, after they pass their rules, assuming they do, but, who say wants to add a, a three-season porch onto the back of their home? And the city tells them that it's within our rules and it's just fine, go ahead and add your three-season porch. And the watershed district comes in and says, "No, you can't add that, or if you do, you now have to have an extra 50 feet of buffer." How do we protect that resident from getting in the middle of this fight?
Well, and that's, that's a lot of what this is about. Because right now, the, the Nine Mile and the city and O'Reilly work together to inform the resident on what they may need to do in the permits that are required. And in some cases, Mr. Ellis can follow up on this. We, we will actually, you know, issue permits in the city based on Nine Mile rules. We will do that. We will take care of that to be kind of the one-stop shop. In some cases, there may be some further follow-up on larger commercial projects. You may remember with UHG, UHG had to go before Nine Mile. But with the homeowner example, Councilmember Nelson, that's something that we try to accomplish, you know, at our counter. But Mr. Ellis probably knows a little bit more about the kind of daily activity.
Yeah. I would say to answer that question, it's something that we'd have to work out with the watershed district. There's a similar question that we had, is if somebody comes to the front counter to get a building permit, permit for a pool, or maybe they're going to landscape their yard, they're going to do something that may or may not trigger the rules. Who's going to calculate that? There's certain calculations that you have to do. Is it a matter of the city just putting a stamp on the permit saying, "Subject to watershed district review and approval"? What if they don't do that? What if they build it? And then the watershed district finds out that they didn't check to see if it triggered a permit? And it did, and they didn't do anything. Those are a lot of questions we have, is how is this going to work? What will be the city's responsibility? Who's going to issue stop work orders? What liability does the city have for issuing permits that might not have been issued if the watershed district? Do we have the watershed district issue the permit first, and then we act second? I mean, there's implications for timelines and schedules for getting projects approved and getting constructions started. So those are, I, these are questions that we would have.
Well, though Mr. Rosso just, I thought, told us that as long as we have rules, their rules don't necessarily come into play on those specific points where we do. So is this person having to do this extra stuff, though the city says they don't have to? Or, aren't they?
It is my opinion that as long as they're not asking for a variance from our rules, that the watershed district rules do not apply in that instance. Where I anticipated your question was going, though, is if they take a, if the watershed district takes a contrary position, and now the homeowner is put in the middle, "City, you've given me a permit. They're saying I can't proceed whatever I do," that is, the matter of which a legal challenge is, is ripe. And in some situation, it may not be the individual homeowner who would bring that challenge. But if you had a larger entity who had read these materials, read their attorney's opinion and, as well as mine, and said, "We don't need to comply and therefore we're not," they would be the ones who would bring such a challenge.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this is not an action item, and you're going to be coming back at the first or second meeting in October for some more discussion on this. Is there any other business?
Maybe just a comment about all the high school people in the room and thanking them for coming. And maybe even raise your hand if you are from a high school class, social civics or something. And thanks for being here. And we'll see you back next meeting also, I'm sure.
Yeah, they're hooked.
Won't there be a test on this last discussion?
If you have any questions about any of the names and acronyms that we've used, feel free to come up and talk to us.
Come up and see us afterwards. We'd like to talk with you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.